Okay, everybody, welcome to the August 15th, 2017 work session and then Public Hearing of Penfield Planning Board. Allison, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mr. Hetzke.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Knauer.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nurseinger.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Wyser.
Here.
Okay, we've got minutes from the July 13th meeting. Any comments, changes? Would you like to entertain a motion to approve them? Bill and Jim. Bastian Burton.
Hetzke.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay. Zach, you want to head down through the agenda, please?
Love to. Tabled applications. We have no updates for baby leaving, so as always, as we have been doing, we propose no action at this time.
All right.
For that application, unless there's any questions. Hearing none, moving on. 1661 Empire Boulevard, Dr. Sam, Van Tuigen Brands application, tabled application from our last meeting, proposing a new addition, a new structure at the back of the property and currently remodeling the existing building for office use, residential for the new building. Received revised plans per the board's comments at the public hearing meeting, one of those being the neighbors provided some comments about their concerns for light being visible from property and beyond, from Empire Boulevard, since the trees have been cleared so that they could prepare the site. Obviously, the building that would go up provides some sort of visual buffer to some of those noise and light complaints that, again, were centered more on Empire Boulevard. As a result, they've updated the plan to show more, a piece of landscaping along Rossman Drive, which was based off of, and I'm going to ask Doug to switch plans, to the visual, the visual generation, the visual tool generation that they provided. I think it's in advocate correspondence at the top. The vector drawing, yes. So what we see here on the plan, the board asked the applicant to provide a vector drawing, basically a line of sight tool to show what's visible from the point of reference of the adjacent property owner. She spoke about her living room and her bedroom, so they started at the front of the house and shot it out in that direction of her view shed, based on the proposed site plan. So it's kind of hard to make out on the screen, but there is a green line showing the proposed structure. Doug's highlighting it there, and the view is limited between that and the existing structure. So the dash line that we see is what the expected view shed would be. And again, in response to that, we have a site plan that shows a landscape buffer to fill in that gap and to address those concerns and...
And this is really because of the removal of some foliage that the neighbors suggested had previously mitigated that...
Precisely, and some of that existing foliage were some taller trees that were kind of hovering over the existing structure, so they wanted to clear up, I mean, as anyone else could do in the town on a residential, on their property, they needed to take out trees that they thought may be harming the structure. They're welcome to do that, as long as it's not in one of our EPods. So that was an example of that, where they took those trees out. There's a kind of older photo showing that, that Doug pulled up on Street View. Those trees are no longer there, they're, again, preparing the site, or just clearing the site of unwanted vegetation. So if we jump back to the site plan, again, we have it there along Rossman Drive, where the landscape buffer is proposed. We did send it off to our landscape consultant. He reviewed it, had a couple of technical comments in terms of the species, they revised, and we ended up at this plan here before the board. The other piece of information, the zoning board has granted its approvals for the area of variances requested. Obviously, conditional approvals, all based on this board's review of the site plan. I'll open it up to the board for any other questions.
So they propose putting a small maple tree in three rows of share in there?
Correct.
Well, maple tree won't be...
Small forever?
It won't grow, certainly.
Armstrong red maple, how big do they get? Do you know?
I'm going to guess in the 20 to 30 foot range. There's, maples are a slow growing tree, but a hardy, really hardy tree.
And with the...
But depends on the type of maple, as to what, you know, is it going to be big, little?
Yeah, how many inches per year and all that stuff, yeah. Red maples are pretty good sized trees. There's quite a few of the same.
Goodness, wonders of the internet.
Ask and tell.
Did I say between 20 and 30? Is that what I said?
Well done, well done.
No, 50 to 60 feet.
Yeah, that's what you said. At least, you said at least.
Fast growing upright tree.
At least approximate.
You said it with such confidence, too.
I did. I actually have a red maple.
The Armstrong red maple.
Yeah, I don't know. I think it's between 20 and 30 feet.
I wonder if it takes steroids to grow that fast?
Fertilizer, in common terms, probably.
Yeah. Not any reference to Lance Armstrong there.
Or several other athletes, but I'm going to come back to cycling.
The Armstrong red maple.
The Armstrong red maple.
Yeah. Okay.
Thoughts, concerns, feedback?
I think that was the only really open items, right? On that, the zoning and the...
Those were the only open items.
I think they've really responded to the town and tried to do the right thing. By the time, you know, planning all this, buffering revised plans, I think they worked very well with the town.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Do we want to see another maple, a little to the west? You know, let's create a tree line kind of streetscape. Work that out?
Probably can't plant them that close together.
They get 25 feet, I think the spread is 15 to 25 feet, so it has to be 50 feet away.
Where the word storm effect would be.
Yeah, that view is blocked by the building.
Okay.
I don't know any issues with that, PJ.
Okay.
I'm also...
I'm just asking.
I think, I think we proceed with the approval resolution.
EAF, first, we prepared the short, part two of the short EAF. Can we hear a motion?
Motion to...
Motion to approve.
I'll make the second.
Short four EAF.
I'm sorry, I'm seconded.
Burton and Tidings.
Yes, sir.
Duly prepared, I think.
Burton, Tidings.
Hetzke.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
All right.
And the draft approval resolution was provided?
I move that we proceed with signing of the approval resolution.
Great, thank you.
Green, Burton, Tidings.
Hetzke.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Greg.
Good luck.
I'll be in touch with the follow-up stuff.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, our other tabled item is the proposed equipment shed for Verizon, or equipment shelter, I'm sorry, of Verizon at 1843 Empire Boulevard, also known as Charlie's Restaurant. Goes back, again, public hearing was last meeting, proposing a site improvement, basically to house equipment to facilitate the communication of the new micro towers that are going up, that they're looking at this site as kind of a hub for communication. It has the space for it in the leased area that they've agreed to. Last meeting, the board tabled it, pending some additional drawings and clarification on the plans. We did receive those, along with responses to comments. Doug, I'll ask if you could bring up the cross-section view. There we go. One of the comments that came out of the meeting was, what is the appearance on the downward slope section of the property, which approaches the back of the property, the western portion of the property? And they provided a cross-section that shows the fencing, the concrete piers, along with the proposed equipment shelter. Here it is on the board, on the screen now.
That's looking from the north, though, right?
Correct. I know we played with our compass a little bit during the public hearing to figure out what's going where.
Our orientation.
But this is the drawing that was provided. That was also, we gave that to the board in advance of this meeting as well. Any thoughts?
So the, the piers, there's two rows of three.
Yes.
If I remember the drawing.
Yes.
So because of the grade inside the fence, below the slab, I'm sorry, below where the floor is of that enclosure, there would be a small cavity above grade. You see where I mean?
Help with that? Yeah, small, I mean, almost not very noticeable probably, but below the fence line, for sure.
Oh, within the fence line, okay.
Within and below the top of the fence line. They carry the same six-foot fence along the grade, protected by the barbed wire for, you know, this facility, which exists today and will continue, and just modify the fence line.
So that, that gap is inside the fence?
Yes.
So we couldn't have little homeless people living there?
Or anyone, but no. It would be, it would be, it would be a secure site.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I have no problem.
And again, they're, and they proposed the concrete piers again, so that there is no effects to the slope, minimizes, it minimizes any grade change or any grading that needs to be done on the site. They did put the contours on the plant, on the, one of the site plans to, again, fill in that missing piece of data that we, the PRC had requested, so that's, that's on there now. I guess the one, the one remaining item for this project at this point would then be, it needs to go to the zoning board still, that'll be at the September meeting, that's to hear the setbacks to the rear property line, showed that on the revised site plan at 19.5 feet-ish, I want to say, I don't have it off the top of my head. There it is. Hey, I'm right, look at me. So they have to do a setback to the rear property line along with a buffer to a residential property, even though the property is owned by the county, by the county parks.
And the variance was, I forget, the variance was for how many feet?
Well, I agree you have a...
Because there already probably a variance there, right?
Yeah, you have a required...
50 foot?
Okay.
Under setback, is that right?
I believe, it's 30. It was 30 in GB.
Okay.
Yep.
And the new is...
And I would have to check with the existing setback.
But they're asking...
They're asking for a greater setback than what's out there now, so.
Okay.
This is going to the zoning board for that reason in September. Our recommendation, if there aren't any questions right now, is the board could table it this evening, pending the public hearing with the zoning board in September, and then revisit in September after the public hearing takes place for the zoning board, so they have the opportunity to hear.
Sure.
The applicant's request.
Do we want to make a comment to the zoning board about whether we support or we don't support the variance?
I would say that we're in support of...
We did that last meeting.
That's right.
Okay. We'll do it again.
We continue to support it.
We're still insisting.
All right, so we're just going to continue tabling this.
It would be our recommendation, again, that's up to the board.
Do we need a motion?
We do.
Yeah, so, motion to continue table this project pending zoning's...
Decision.
Results, decisions.
Great, sir.
Yeah, we did that last meeting.
Okay, Hetzke.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
No miscellaneous.
No miscellaneous items this evening.
About 13 minutes before the public hearing starts, we will recess and reconvene at 7:00 PM.
Sounds good.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 15th, 2015 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have two applications on our agenda. We have a member who has recused himself, Mr. Burton's recused himself from the first item, so he'll sit this one out and then rejoin the board up here on the dais for the second application. Way the process works is the applicant will present their project to the planning board, the planning board will ask questions, then we open up the, the floor to the audience. If you'd like to comment on any of the applications, raise your hand when it's, when we open it up to the floor and I'll, I'll ask you to come up. Please come up to the podium, introduce yourself with your name and address for the record, and then address your comments to the board instead of to the applicant. All right, with that, Zach, please read the first application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, TY Lynn International, 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14058, on behalf of Sam Kaiser, requests under Chapter 250, Articles 6-6.2 and 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan and EPod permit approval for a parking lot expansion with associated site improvements on 7.82 acres located at 2328 Old Browncroft Boulevard. The property is now formerly owned by WDFALC and is zoned R120. Application number 17P-0019, SBL number 108.18-1-1.
Good evening. My name's Bob Kiefer. I'm a professional engineer employed by TY Lynn International. Our local office is located at 255 East Avenue, and I'm here representing Sam Kaiser, the owner of the property and the proprietor of Glendover's Party House. This project has been in our office for a number of years. We were contacted by Sam and asked to assist him in doing some evaluation of the highest and best use and had the opportunity for expansion of the facility, and we started that process by retaining O'Neill Road Act to perform a boundary and topographic survey. And then we retained environmental resources, Jean Palette, to do a wetland delineation, and that information is depicted on the existing conditions map that is located behind me. As you're fully well aware, this is a, the portion of the site that we're proposing for redevelopment or for development is a very steep slope ridge, part of the, the steep slopes that are around Rondacoye Creek or Rondacoye Bay. Back in December, we made application, appeared before this board for concept review. There was a host of review comments from the county and the town and others, which we responded to on or about the same time. And then we appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals on May 18th, because this is a pre-existing non-conforming use in this zone, and we would have to have a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for any expansion or modification of that use at this site. It's my understanding that, per the decision that they wrote up, that they were providing this board with a letter indicating that they looked with favor upon the proposal to be able to expand that use at that location. What we're proposing to do... Were you able to hear me? Okay. What we're proposing to do...
There's a handheld mic, if you don't mind, Bob, picking up that.
Got a green light on there?
It does.
You're on.
Probably works.
You just got to hold it up close.
What we're proposing to do is to remove a significant portion of this hill and create a parking area that would provide 37 additional parking spaces. The current facility is significantly underserved by parking, and the result of, the offshoot of that is, is that when they have an event, it's not uncommon to have cars parked along the, both sides of the road on Old Browncroft Boulevard. Old Browncroft Boulevard is no longer a through street, it's barricaded, so the only traffic that is using this portion of Old Browncroft is the people that go to Glendovers or people that might be hiking. But this is, the issue remains that it would be difficult to get emergency vehicles to this location when there was a major event and there was cars parked on both sides of the road. It's been my experience that, that existing businesses that are not evolving are probably declining, and the, the market for party houses and catering and for banquet facilities is competitive, and to be, to maintain the ability to run this facility at this location, they have to make adjustments, and the ability to provide additional parking spaces at this location would make this site much more attractive. It would make it easier to have the larger events, and the site has a great many amenities that are attractive to people interested in having a, a party of some type. They have outdoor space, it's very secluded, a great scenery around it and so forth, so it's reasonable and appropriate, I think, to be able to facilitate their staying in business and expanding their business by having additional parking. There essentially are no proposed changes to the existing utilities or the existing structures. This is purely a earthwork operation that creates a pad for constructing additional parking spaces. We would then obviously have to do the stormwater pollution prevention work and the landscaping and the restoration of the slopes, but it's not a, an expansion of the building, per se. There's been a, a host of review comments over the past months. If, if you don't mind, I would just like to deal with the most recent comments, and I think that they will hit upon many of the topics that have been discussed before. I'm in receipt of, on August 4th, 2017, letter from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and it outlines a number of, of issues from their perspective. The first that they indicate is that there's state wetlands. The state wetlands are depicted on here, and they were delineated by a wetland specialist. The, the next step in that process is to have the, the limits of the wetland validated or, or concurred with by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I have a letter dated today that indicates that...
Thank you.
Mr. Jones agrees with Mr. Palette's interpretation of where the wetlands are. If you're familiar with the site, this area to the south of the Old Browncroft Boulevard is an obvious wetland. It has all of the features of a cattail bog swamp, looks like a place where a moose would live. The same is true on the north side of it, so the, the delineation for where that elevation of the water in that portion of the site intercepts the higher ground is, is very clear. It goes from here, it goes uphill very rapidly, significantly higher than the, than the wetland area. The New York State DEC has an adjacent area, which is 100 feet back from the delineated wetland. We put the adjacent area on our drawings also, and as proposed, the only disturbance that would occur within the adjacent area is where we would discharge stormwater out of our stormwater feature into the wetland. The water that leaves the site currently goes into the wetlands, so we're not changing the overall drainage here, and, and there'll be a slight increase in the volume once this area is paved, but the DEC generally supports having additional water in their wetlands. The, the second item on this letter from the DEC is that, that we need to validate that this, that the Corps of Engineers concurs with the delineation from the standpoint of the federal wetlands. It, it seems very unlikely to me that they're not going to do that, although I do not have that documentation this evening. The, and if the delineation that the Corps chose to use was slightly different, it, it certainly would not be as far off as 100 feet that we've already incorporated into the buffer. So we're essentially staying out of the wetlands and the wetland adjacent area to the extent that's possible. They, the DEC indicates that we're going to have to have a stormwater permit. We're prepared to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan to meet the current regulations. We conceptually depicted how that was going to work on these drawings, and if this project is looked with a favor and moves it forward, we would provide that in, in great detail. Historic architectural, archaeological, cultural resources, we did go to the website and we did not find any indication that there was burial grounds or, or historic buildings on this site, but we will get a determination from that office that this site is clean, if you will. Botanic communities endangered and threatened species, it's our intention to retain Jean Palette to go back and do that research. The next item is flood plain. All of the area that we're talking about working in and all of the existing facility is well above the flood plain. The flood plain elevation is similar to the elevation of the wetland, and this is 20, 30 feet higher than that. We're not building any structures, we're not filling in the wetlands or filling in the flood plain, we're not obstructing the flood plain flow, floodway, it's, it's going to have no effect. Mining and land reclamation, the DEC has regulations with regards to issuance of a mining permit if you're going to excavate more than a certain number of cubic yards of material. We've had lengthy discussions over the past several years with the town regarding the, the issue of, of seeking a mining permit and separating the removal of the soil from the site plan review process. We were strongly encouraged by staff to incorporate the design of the parking lot into the application for the removal of the fill material. So what we're proposing before you is a, is a plan that requires the removal of the soil in order to create the site plan. And we believe that that will eliminate the need to have a mining permit from the DEC. Based on a very recent conversation with them, they did not think that there would be a problem, and they're issuing a mining permit if site plan approval were granted, and they continued to believe that a mining permit was required. We're in receipt of a letter from the Town of Penfield Conservation Board dated August 1st, 2017. They, they go through a host of items describing the project and, and commenting on the completeness of the environmental assessment form, and then go into some recommendations with regards to lighting. We, we want to comply with night sky lighting design. If there's a reasonable argument for lowering the pole heights, we would be happy to do that. Turning the lights on at night only when the facility's in use is a reasonable and practical and environmentally and financially appropriate thing to do. They indicate that there's going to be a significant visual change in the site, that's absolutely true. This area will be like a amphitheater, two and a half on one slope, vegetated to Crown Vets or other appropriate ground cover. We anticipate, based on other similar type operations, one that happened just up the street from here, that in a few years, the shrubs and the, and the trees and the brush will come in, and that in eight or 10... in, and that in eight or 10 years, you will see a significant number of young trees growing on a slope. They indicate or point out the obvious, that this is going to result in the removal of a significant number of trees. They put photographs in here of the trees, and yes, this area will be denuded of the mature trees. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or delve into any of the issues that have been talked about before this board previously, or however you would like to proceed.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, Bob. I think, Carrie, you want to start?
Yeah, Bob, I got a couple of questions for you. Thank you. First, Mr. Kaiser owns this location, the catering.
I believe that it's under some other corporate structure, but yes, Sam Kaiser is the owner of the property.
And he's been there for many years?
A goodly number of years. I don't know exactly how many.
And what's the occupancy for that particular building there?
I do not know.
Okay. Okay, so how many parking spaces do you presently have?
Forty-five. And we're asking to build 37 more. With the 37 more, it fails to meet the requirements of the code for the occupancy of the building. We're not over, we're not creating more parking spaces than required. We're still short parking spaces per code requirement.
So basically, the 45 have never been sufficient to operate for the past 20-plus years? That's why.
It's been insufficient for a very long time, yes.
Okay. And 37 additional spaces are the reason they're going through all this application?
It is a significant effort, and it is considered to be justifiable that having 37 more parking spaces will make this site that much more viable.
And presently, they have a tent set up in the front of the building, correct?
I'm sorry?
There's a tent that they use presently in front of the building?
There are, during certain times of the year, they have a tent, yes.
Okay. And there's no intention of using the new parking spaces for other tents or things of that nature?
No, no. The tents and the summertime activity equipment will occur on the lawn area that will remain after this parking lot is created.
And how many employees do you usually have there when they have a function there? Or for the catering business, because they know they run a catering business out there also, correct?
The times that I've been there during the day when there was not an event going on, there was three or four people that were doing preparation for catering. The number of people that are there during a significant event, this probably measures 100 or more.
And how many variances are you going to request from ZVA for this particular application?
We're requesting approval for expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming use. We do not need any dimensional variances, area variances.
How much dirt you think's going to be required to be taken out of the?
Between 30 and 35,000 cubic yards. Basically, that translates into 3,000 to 3,500 10-wheeler dump truck loads.
How many?
There's about 10 cubic yards per truck, so it's 3,000 to 3,500 truckloads. Some of the material may go away in a six-wheeler, and that would change the number of trucks.
Right.
Some of it might go away in a tractor-trailer, and that would reduce the number of trucks.
And have you found a, was Mr. Kaiser, found the company that's going to do this?
We've had ongoing discussions with Ange Franti, the owner of Affronti Trucking and Excavating. He's located in Marion, contractor that I've had many years of experience with. He has an interest in having exclusive rights to the site. It's a kind of two-way street between the owner of the property and the contractor. The contractor wants to have exclusive rights to it so that other people aren't competing for that material or impacting his ability to remove the material, and the owner of the property wants to be sure that the contractor is going to be responsible for the erosion control and the maintaining of the cleanliness of the street and the security of the site and the costs associated with getting that site ready to remove the soil.
Right, and that's probably all going to be subject to the town's approval also, right?
Absolutely, yes, right. As part of the site plan review and approval process, and ultimately, I think there'll be a letter of credit posted for financial guarantee to ensure that there would be monies available to close the site up if it stopped or if it, things changed.
Bob, is there any other, is this the only plan available to accomplish what you wanted for 37 parking spaces? Could it be less?
We.
You know, cutting into the hill?
Well, you could cut into the hill less and have less number of parking spaces, but this is essentially the maximum number of parking spaces that we can create when we use a two and a half on one slope on the cut face around the parking area and stay within the limits of the property and outside of the 100-foot adjacent area to the wetlands. This is essentially the biggest amphitheater that we can make without going off of our property or into the adjacent area. We looked at the possibility of putting parking spaces elsewhere on the site, but then you destroy the amenities associated with having photo opportunities or outside activities, barbecues or bocce or whatever.
Do they use that area in the back on the north side of the building for that type of?
That's correct. This area is used, the lawn areas are used for that purpose.
What about the runoff during all this construction phase here?
The thought is, is that during the removal of the soil, we're going to contain the runoff within the excavation, that there'll be a berm along this side of it so that the water can't leave. It would just become wet there. Once the site is graded and we've stabilized the slopes, then we would remove that berm and install the stormwater design that would support the parking lot.
And then you're just going to asphalt the new spaces, are you going to do the whole parking lot when the project's complete, or are you going to?
Once this area's been stabilized and during the restification of the site at the end of the removal of the material, we'll stabilize the parking area with crushed stone, we'll stabilize the slopes with topsoil seeded to ground cover. The timing for how quickly the pavement goes in or the finishing up of the parking lot, I think it will follow as soon as the construction season allows. And I anticipate that the existing parking lot would be resurfaced as part of the final paving of the new parking lot.
How long you think this whole project may take?
It's a very difficult question to answer, based on my previous experience and the experience of the removal of the big hill by the Basil's Restaurant on Empire Boulevard. I think that it's probably two construction seasons is required. The, kind of the caveat here is, is that Murphy's Law says if you have fill material, you have no place to put it, and if you need fill material, you can't find it. But the contractors, larger contractors, like having the ability to have large quantities of clean fill available to them because, one, they earn the income associated with trucking material to someone who needs fill. It's not uncommon to find fill free, but what are you going to do with it? You can't put it in the trunk of your car, so you have to retain somebody to load it out, put it in a truck, transport it, and then bulldoze it into place at the other end. So if a person has, a contractor has, access to large quantities of very clean, suitable, nice material, like it's going to come out of this hill, he would be kind of in the catbird seat to get the trucking and the excavating and the placement of it. And the income from that allows the contractor to incur the costs associated with the tree removal, the restoration, the siltation control, dah 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 dah. If Mr. Kaiser was to build this project and just put it out for a bid, and you had to take 30,000 yards of material away, it would be a $100,000 project just to get rid of the material. It's not cost justifiable if you have to put the project out that way. So now you enter into a contract with a contractor. He's responsible for these items of work. He gets exclusive rights to the site, and he waits for people to want material. Thirty thousand yards is a very large number if you don't put it in the context of the number of jobs that are happening in Monroe County. The site is in close proximity to Metropolitan Rochester. I don't know where there's another site where you can buy, can obtain virgin soil, fine soil for, soil that has excellent capabilities for being compacted and is free-draining, uncontaminated, easily graded. And the general fill that you get, the fill that they fill the interloop with was the fill that came out of the Penfield Highway Department's excess soil pile. It has a little bit of everything in it. Construction, demolition, asphalt, concrete, curb, some organics. So for a site that is building a new building, needs good clean fill material, this would be an excellent choice.
What about the weight limits and stuff for that, our new bridge over there, the Town of Penfield?
It's my understanding that Old Browncroft was once a state highway and that it was built to those standards, and I have no reason to believe that the highway or the bridge is inadequate for handling the truck traffic. That was an opinion that was also shared by the Highway Superintendent for the Town of Penfield.
Okay, so they're addressing that also. And the, some other issue that came up, what about the, there's trails up there that, just to the east of the location, that go up the hill there also?
This project is adjacent to county lands that are parks and hiking. It's our intent, based on previous review comments, other from previous applications, to meet with the Penfield hiking people. They had expressed an interest in having one or more parking spaces that would be available to them as a trailhead kind of thing. I think that can be incorporated into the project. I think that the town, I'm not making decisions for the town, but I think the town might consider allowing parking within the right-of-way pass Glendavir's up the hill further because it's not a through street, and it is publicly owned property, and that might be a place where you could have some parking for the trailhead.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Bob, I got a couple of questions. Could you tell us what the number of required spaces would be if you were able to?
I believe that it is on the drawings. Let's see. Zach, do you remember where that was tabulated?
Should be on your parking layout one.
Yeah, it's four of 12, I believe. Okay. Required based on 1.5 spaces per every two occupants and one for each employee, 195 spaces is required by code. Okay. And with a maximum occupancy of 250 people and 10 employees.
Okay, and so.
I can tell you that's a rare event, because they can't get close to that number of parking spaces.
Okay, so 45 and 37 is?
Eighty-five, eighty-seven.
Eighty-five, I believe, when we're done.
Okay. Have you considered making the slopes steeper and expanding the parking more?
The soils are lightly cemented, horizontally bedded, silty fine sands, fine sandy sills. It's the soils that we find around Aranaquay Bay and Webster Park and elsewhere. The natural angle of repose, the cut surface, could be steeper than two and a half on one.
That's about 30 degrees?
Yes, right. At two and a half on one, it's not as steep as a set of stairs. The existing ground is one-on-one, which is steeper than standard stairs. The advantage to going to two and a half on one is that we can place topsoil on the cut surface.
Okay.
If you make it steeper than two and a half on one, it's hard to place topsoil and get that to grow.
How about a retaining wall or something like that?
The cost of the structure for the gain in parking spaces makes it unjustifiable.
Okay. And then the other, you mentioned that you anticipated taking two construction seasons. Is that because the contractor would be probably taking two construction seasons to find buyers for the soil that's being removed?
The question that's posed is how long do we think it's going to take? It's possible that it would occur in one construction season.
But is, I mean, I guess the question was, is it due to the fact that what's determining the timeframe is more finding places to put the top?
It's the demand for clean fill soil, yes.
Okay.
And I, it's, I'm.
It's dependent upon finding homes for that.
I don't have divine say in how the contracts are structured, but it's by recommendation, it's my understanding, that the operation is not going to start until a project has been identified that requires a substantial amount of soil.
Okay.
It is not the intent to start.
So he's not going to remove the soil, take it out to Marion, pile it up in Marion, and then sell it from there? He's looking to sell it from here?
It's going to go from there to its destination.
Okay.
And it will not be a situation where we remove the trees and start taking one truck a week out. I mean, there has to be an impetus to mobilize and to have a contract for a significant amount of fill.
Okay.
We talked about the cash flow associated with fill soils. Another aspect of that is, is if there's a contract being let in the Rochester area that has a demand for a significant amount of fill, a person who has exclusive rights to a site like this can bid that project more competitively than somebody else.
Sure.
So he would, they would be quote-unquote "in the catbird seat" to do that work.
Understood.
And it's, I think you probably are experiencing the fact that the new stormwater regulations require that there be a separation between the bottom of the dry swales and the water table. So if you've cut a swale, and then you have to have a two-foot separation from the bottom of the swale to the water table, you have to have a site that has a water table that's no closer than four feet of the surface. Well, all the sites in Monroe County where we have a low water table are gone, so there's many projects that are being built where they raise the roadway several feet and have the buildings be walkouts because they have to get above the water table. So I think the demand for clean fill is going to increase, and that it might very well get rid of this material in a year or 16 months or something.
Okay. Thank you. You have any other questions from the board?
I have one, Bob. During the removal process of the material, how does that impact the existing parking lot?
We're going to maintain the existing tree line and berm immediately adjacent to the existing pavement. So when you park in those spaces and are facing to the east, there's going to be natural ground there until we're almost done.
Okay, so that would be the last strip of material to be removed?
That's right. It's not the intent to haul this material out through the parking lot of the Glendavir's. It's the intent to bring it out onto Browncroft and go down, and therefore, there won't be people encroaching into that area when it's under construction. It'll be gated off or chained off, and they'll function very much like they do today until they're very close to having it open.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Are we also with the lighting? You're just going to, there wasn't going to be any new additional lighting, right? Just building lighting?
No, there's a proposal.
Proposed, and there's a new.
In the parking lot?
Okay.
Okay, and there were comments made by the Conservation Board with regards to that, and we will adjust our plan accordingly to comply with their recommendation with regards to intensity. And the, an underlying premise in all of that was, is that the lights would only be on when there was an event there, and we certainly would agree to that.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. Would anyone in the audience care to comment on this application?
Sir?
Come on up.
Ed Linsco, 40 Willow Pond Way, and also Vice President of Penfield Trails. We're very happy to work with any owners around the area there. We are planning improvements to the area trails. We're trying to do a connector between Ellison Park Trails, Lucian Moran Park Trails, which are immediately north of this area, and Tryon Park. I've been meeting regularly with town officials to develop a plan to, to put together to work with all the partners. It includes Baker Commodities and, of course, this project, State DOT, and Monroe County Parks. We're, we're, me personally, I'm in favor of the project. I've parked at this facility. We've used it a lot for scout activities, and we understand the problem it has now. And we're also trying to provide some additional spot to launch boats because the spot that the public was using for boats is on Pure Waters property, and they fenced that off. So the, the town will be working in addition with this project to, to see that all parties are happy and we can attain some additional parking that we need because we think the trailhead is going to be busier if we tie these three trails together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. There's, it's a symbiotic relationship. I think there's an opportunity to have Glendaviers and the trails people coordinate their, their activities. If there's going to be a cross-country ski event or, or a hiking fundraiser, Glendaviers might-
Open up.
-open up and host hot dogs and drinks or whatever, hot chocolate in the winters. I, I think that the, that Sam is very amenable to sharing the, the wonder of that area with the hikers.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to comment on this application? All right, anybody else from the board? Bob, do you have any final comments? Thank you very much, a nice thorough presentation as usual.
Thank you.
We will move on to application number two and welcome our fifth board member, Mr. Jim Burton, making his way up as we speak.
Application number two. Peter Romeo, RA, 35 Paramount Lane, Rochester, New York, 14610. On behalf of Yasmin Haganovic, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for a single-family residence along with associated site improvements on 0.46 acres located at 2775 Penfield Road. Property is now reformally owned by Yasmin Haganovic and is zoned RA2. Application number 17P-0020, SBL number 141.01-1-15.
Pete, you might want to put that one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, my name's Pete Romeo. I've been, I'm actually a retired registered architect. All right, I just can't seem to put my pencil down. In any case, this is a revision to a site plan that was previously submitted, right, modified, right, for the main purpose of, of, of reducing the front and rear yard variances that we had sought initially. Initially, we had sought a setback that was, I believe, 36 feet. I think this one shows one that's 34, or 34, which increased it by two feet, rather, right? The rear yard setback remains proposed at 20. The zoning ordinance requires a 30-foot setback. The reason that I used the, the new north south dimension is that it's really very difficult to design even a two-bedroom house, right, with a footprint that's narrower than, than 26 feet, right, along its short axis. The, the plans have been approved by the Monroe County Department of Health for a septic system in Leach Field to support a two-bedroom house. The site plans also show the capability of the site to accommodate the 50% expansion criteria imposed by the County Department of Health for Leach Fields, right? And that capability is reflected on each of these, on each of these site plans. This site has been of this configuration since 1971, right, at which time 25 feet was added to the west of the west property line to eliminate a conflict of the west property line running through the existing shed, right, that's on the frontage of that property. By way of historical reference, it's my understanding through dialogue with the town historian that that existing barn on the frontage dates back to the mid-1920s. So essentially, what you see before you is a proposal to construct a two-story, two-bedroom house with a walkout basement on the south side, right? The topography, right, is very conducive to doing that, and the topo map shows the contours that underscore the reason why I said that. It's possible to capture a lower level, right, both under the garage and under the house proper. Since we were last before you and before the Zoning Board of Appeals, right, the owner has installed a three-foot wood fence along the frontage, right, run it back, I believe, 20 feet, and then in tapered sections has increased the height to six feet on the east and west property lines and on the south property lines. The, we have had preliminary dialogue with the State Department of Transportation relative to the requirements for a driveway on the state right-of-way property. We've dialogued with the Monroe County Water Authority to determine the pressure and related pipe size for domestic water service, right? And we need to dialogue with RGENE about the possibility of doing what they refer to as an aerial tap instead of running electric service to a power pole. And the reason that I say that is that in order to run it to a power pole, the nearest one being off the northeast corner, it lies on the frontage of the abutting property to the east, right, and would require an easement from that property to run an underground line to the northeast corner of the proposed house. You also need to bear in mind that through the requirements imposed by the Department of Health and the related Leach Field, right, nothing is to be planted on any portion of the Leach Field, its flanks and its tapers, other than grass. So the landscaping opportunities are truly minimal, right? I've shown some landscaping along the north perimeter of the house and the east perimeter of the house, right? There's, I believe, one walnut tree that shows on the site plan to be retained. The rear yard 20 feet doesn't really appear to be inviting to plant additional significant vegetation. The limitation is likewise introduced at the north yard, the front yard. Also, if you notice the, the topography that's required by the septic system, there is really very little flat area in the front to the east of the driveway and the two-car parking apron. I submitted a preliminary floor plan to Mr. Jim Costello based on his request for a sketch plan of the two-bedroom residence. I did so. I didn't get any negative response from him. And really, that's, that's about it. If you have any questions of myself or Mr. Haganovic, the property owner, I'd be welcome to try to respond to them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to start off?
Yes, in the application, it states that the lower level under the garage is to be used for storage.
Right.
As well as the barn that's to be, to remain is also to be used for storage.
Right.
And currently, there was a letter sent to the town from a Mr. Matt Jewett, states that there continues to run your business out of the property. Construction equipment continues to be stored there as well as trucks, plows, scaffolding, et cetera. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, I would prefer to have Mr. Haganovic respond to that. Well, I am aware of the fact that he has a collection of 150 chainsaws, right, as a hobby, right? He's not in the chainsaw purchase and resale business. Fairly obviously, those chainsaws shouldn't be stored outside, even under a tarp. So I'll have Mr. Haganovic come to the podium, right, and maybe he can clarify the, the inference that he's running a business, right, out of that site.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Hi.
All right.
I'm Jasmin Haganovic, and I, I heard a lot of more nonsense from Mr. Jewett before on every zoning board and everything else. So his goal is to buy that property for cheap. That's why he's doing all these. Secondly, I don't run the business from there. The equipment that he's talking about, it's been there to use on the property and never was moved from the property, and once I finish what I'm doing with it, it won't be there. And I don't know why, it's always saying the truck is coming there. I didn't, I have a dump truck, one ton smoke, it's about the size of pickup, and I keep it at home. I had it there over the winter just to plow the driveway that I have there, and I, because that's my driveway, I have a right to it. I got a call from town inspector, he says, "You gotta take it out of there." I did. I put pickup truck with the snow plow there, and I use that. Now, that's the problem. So I, what I see, the, the problem is, they don't want me there, do anything or be there. They have a problem with me building a house, they have a problem with me being there, they have a problem with me putting a fence on or having this as a storage. So what I can do with the property? Would you guys buy it in the name of the town? I mean, I, I gotta do something with it. So that's what I think. It is just, you know, somebody's maybe regretting they didn't buy it, and now I am the target for what? I don't understand. And now, the storage, which Peter says is a retake, it would be really nonsense not to use that space underneath because we have that. Either we build a house or we fill the space, why not use it? It's better, it's more economically, it looks better, I can use it. And about my collection, I do hope one day I will have time and work on those chainsaws. I do work once in a while on it and fix, not for the profit, just, I like to do that. And everything I made, I made by my hands, I worked my hands, so, and I'm happy doing it. That's why I need the storage, and that's, that's about that.
All right.
And I don't do anything different than, they already doing it there. Everybody has something there. They have a, Mr. Jewett has the same cabota as I have it on his property. He has a RV, he has a multi-vehicle. Isn't that justice for all? I mean, I should be the same, and I will be if I get approved by the builder house. Whatever, you know, I won't be different. But right now, it's, it is what it is, I, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will have no other questions, other questions?
Yeah, I, I would just like to add, if I may, right, at the prior hearings, I've made reference to the storage space under the garage as being ideally situated, located, right, not for the sake of storing over-the-road vehicles, but for storing recreational vehicles, right? We're all aware of the fact that the town has an ordinance that allows certain recreation vehicles to, to be parked in the side yard. I think we all accept that with a grain of salt because in most instances, it's not the most aesthetic presentation of the side yards of any house. So bear in mind that this would allow any owner, right, whether he has a snowmobile, watercraft, he would put his lawnmower, his snow blower, he could store all of that in the lower level of the garage. So I just want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any last questions?
I had, I had one question, Peter.
Yes?
Could you describe again, I think I picked up some of it, the electric service for the property? You indicated that the location would require an easement. I assume that's off of the property to the west?
I got the electricity already on the property. It's already on the property.
You gotta answer.
Come on up and make sure that everybody-
Electricity's already on the property, and it's attached to the barn, and it's been, been done like last year. So what we want to do is-
So you have electric service at the barn?
Yes.
And that would just be extended over to the house?
It's right there, and it's got, it's a, it will be able to move it from there to the house if we have to airline, or we can get, RGENE will decide, we'll let RGENE decide what they want to.
Okay.
Because I had to pay certain amount of the money right now because there is no residence there, and they charged me like commercial or whatever they did it, but I have it there.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is then that there could be electrical service without relying on an easement?
Yes, I got already, it's, it's already there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
No.
Terry? Good. Okay, would anyone from the audience like to comment on this? Yes, sir, if you could come on up and introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and please address the board with your comments. address the board with your comments.
My name is Bert Vig. I live across the street from this property. I lived there for about, approximately about 40 years, okay? And the whole thing is, what really bothers me is the trash, what he, what he has on that property. Now, the thing is, they have buried a lot of engine parts, whole engines, and there was like about, usually what they did in that place is repair tractors.
You're saying this was a previous owner?
That's correct. Absolutely. And the whole thing is like, that whole area is contaminated with oil. Now, I, you know, I don't think it's a, it's a most desirable place to put a property, a house on there, for one thing. The other thing is like what I have is, he, I, I know, I don't know, you know, what he thinks, but that doesn't make any difference. The whole point is, what I'm trying to say is, I do not believe the way it's set up, it's appropriate for a residential area. I don't think so. Because, like I said, I lived there about, you know, about 40 years, and I saw what was going on. I mean, the thing is like, it's, it's all, it was junk. And right now, what they have there is like buried under the dirt. Now, I don't, I don't know whether the state or the county or the town has anything to do with it, but environment, the environment is not safe, far as I'm concerned, okay? It's oil in there, and that has to be removed. Because that's, that's not the way to operate. I'm sorry. But that's my comment on this.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Come on up, please.
Yeah, I just gotta respond on that contamination he think is, it's oils. There was only the oil filters that he throw up from his property down into the, they used that as a, as a junkyard before I bought it. They used, somebody dumped a roof shingles and some other couple oil filters was there. I cleaned it up, most of it. I left couple 1950s Corvette parts there because I was trying to use that as a pre-existing condition in a, I'll say, fight with the town because the town says pre-existing. I thought I can do what the other guy was doing it, and that's what he's talking about. I don't know what's, but the property is clean. There is no anything that will be contaminated or any, you know. I cleaned it first month before, and three days after we started, not even three days, they called the town, "What I'm doing, why I'm doing this, stop excavation, come there, here." I was just cleaning it up. So, I don't know why, Mr. Living there 40 years, how long you gonna be there before you wanna move? You, I mean, it's a too big place for you anyway.
You know what? I don't wanna get into a...
Oh, okay. Sorry. So, I, no.
When's the last time anybody from enforcement was out to meet with you at the property?
I'm sorry?
When's the last time anyone from the town was out to meet you?
Oh, we are already on the court, and the court is, the town judge is kinda indicating that to the inspectors that that's more like a zoning issue. We should narrow it down, and we've been there for six months. So, you know, I, I believe I have some rights. You guys say it's a zone RA2 on the tax bill is a residential one. So, the town is doing something, you know...
You're going back before zoning anyways, pretty soon, right? So, you're gonna find out.
Yeah, so, I'm, you know...
All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay?
I would just like to supplement the comments that have been exchanged relative to subsurface contamination, right? As is required by the Monroe County Department of Health, anyone with the intent of constructing a septic leach field must do a certain number of test pits, right? We accommodated that requirement. We had no choice, right? We dug the test pits, right? One of them is a deep test pit, the other two are shallower. Again, by mandate of Department of Health, there was no contamination found in any of those holes. Additionally, along the east property line, there is an active well, all right? It's about four foot square. Mr. Haganovich had purchased a number of arborvitae, right, that were on the site. Some of them have met their maker, but he used the water from that well, all right, to irrigate the trees that he had purchased, all right? And there's no evidence that they have been negatively affected by the quality of the groundwater. So, I'll leave you with that comment.
Sir, come on back up. I don't wanna start a big back and forth here, but...
That's not it. I just, you know, since I've been there about 40 years, I saw exactly what was going on with that property. And it's not like, it's, it's, the, 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 the whole thing is not suitable for a house, really. Because I don't, I don't believe, and I, and the thing is, I didn't throw anything over there, but it doesn't make any difference. The point is, what I'm trying to make is, they have a barn there, and they use it for repairing auto cars, tractors, and everybody else. But he doesn't know it because he wasn't even there. I was there. I saw it. Okay? That's the whole thing. I saw exactly what they were used for. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ma'am, did you wanna make a comment?
Hello. Jennifer Haney, 277, 2779 along the east side. And I would just like to say, first of all, I'm sorry Mr. H feels that way, that he's being targeted. I don't believe that's true. And my, my concern is that pulling out of my driveway, it's very hard to see. And secondly...
Are you immediately to the east?
Yes.
Is your driveway right along the property line?
Right in sight, yeah. You know, so that, that's something is concerning to me and my family and my neighbors behind The main thing is, I, I just don't understand why somebody would wanna put themselves in harm's way that close to the road. He's got less than an acre or a half acre, and it's so close to the road. During the winter, cars are off to the side of the road all the time, at least once a week. So, I just think it's, it's, it's very dangerous. So, that's another concern.
Okay.
I just, I don't understand putting yourself in harm's way. So, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Sure. Come on up.
Yep. Her driveway is about 60 feet from the east property line further, not immediately to the fence. I don't think it's gonna affect her view. She already got the trees right now. She can see it from them anyway. And that's, I think it's just, you know...
Okay.
And they also, we cleared these up with the zoning board at the last meeting about the cars coming down the road. Ma'am, when the last time you see the cars there?
Sir, you have to address the board.
Yeah. Never, I never, I went to the fire station tree, which is right down the road on the Penfield Road. I asked them, they say they never had no cars there. I went to the sheriffs because they told me the sheriffs are in Penfield Town, down at Linden Avenue office. They all talk about Jomandaway. Nobody doesn't talk about the site or either. And if the cars was going there, the barn wouldn't be there for 70 years. I mean, somebody will hit it, right? And I don't know why they, they just trying to make everything look like it's a danger so that I don't get it or whatever. I don't know. I mean, it's, I don't, I did expect people from across the street to come today, but I didn't expect these women today, but it's fine. I, you know, they have concerns, but I don't think that's it. There's no problem there.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just like to piggyback briefly about visibility issues, right, in our dialogue with the New York State Department of Transportation, right? And as is required by the town, our site plans have always indicated the sightline distances from the center line of the proposed driveway, right, to the east and to the west, right? In any case where we have proposed a driveway, they were well within the maximum distances prescribed by the state DOT. Thank you.
Okay. Ma'am, would you like to come on up?
My name is June Vague. I live at 2780 Penfield Road. It's the house directly across the street from there. It's a landmark house. Anyways, there were two other barns there to the east of the present little barn with the tin roof. There were two other ones, and that's where they used to also work in there with the tractors and whatever they were repairing. They have fallen down since. I can't tell you which years, but they were certainly there when we moved there and for several years after that. What else was I gonna say? Our mailbox has been hit by a car sliding down. Our tree has been hit by a car sliding down. We're between two hills. We dip down, and so people will be coming along, and there's many people sliding off now and then on the roads. Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else care to comment on this application? Anyone else on the board have comments?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much for coming. We'll call this hearing closed. We will have a work session in the back. You're all welcome to attend to finish up our business tonight. And other than that, we will call our hearing closed.
So, we can discuss the most recent application first?
You just wanna leave before anybody else?
That's okay. That's okay.
How do we feel? Do we feel accommodating?
I say make him stay.
Do I could sit in the audience and heckle him? All right. We might as well, all right, we'll accommodate.
Again.
Mr. Burke.
Again.
Go to your corner then. Sorry? Oh, wait, we're not, you're not gone yet. Sorry. I'm still in the other mode. All right, so, we'll discuss the second application that was presented, 2775 Penfield Road.
This, to me, seems like a very challenging situation. Here we have a undersized lot, pre-existing, non-conforming use. We have a gentleman who...
Size.
Yeah, but the barn is pre-existing, non-conforming. Really can't get a house on there without variances. Somebody buys a property, and what do they do with it? Is the town willing to bail them out?
No.
No. Everybody has certain rights to do with their property what they, what they want. I understand the neighbor's comments. I understand his comments. So, I think we need to look at it really from a purely site plan standpoint.
What I didn't understand, and if it's true, that they were doing automobile repair, engine repairs there and everything, which was common back in the...
40s, 50s.
50s, they would dump oil on the ground, which would contain cadmium, hexanol, chrome, materials we had found over Allison Heights, because they would do an engine repair there, and they were dumping it on the ground. So, if this is to go forward, we should do a look, do some sampling there to see if there's those contaminants in the soil, because I don't know what they sample for when they do septic.
All they look for is where there's the water table, when they do the deep hole. If they go down six, eight feet, they're looking for water infiltration for a conventional drainage system. This is a sand fill...
Apparently for the rate of percolation.
Exactly. So, the health department is...
But if there's contamination... Yeah, well, they are, because if you find inorganic materials in there, that's one of the causes that would result in requirements for a raised bed system, which they're using here. I suspect that's more because they couldn't get a percolation.
You couldn't get a park.
Because it grabs off to the ground. And it's Penfield, and it's rock, and it's wet, and it's there.
But that wouldn't be anything to do with any contaminants outside of just the weather it can perk or not.
Except when they're actually constructing the leach field, when they strip the top soil off of here, if they find inorganic material, that's gotta be removed. If they find contamination, the county health department's going to shut them down. So, they would have to, you know, I, with, with respect to the, the non-conforming lot size, a large reason why you'll find consistent lot sizes for one or two family dwellings all over the northeast is because of the designs of private sewage disposal systems. So, if, if, if the Monroe County Health Department sees the available area here as adequate for a raised fill evaporation system with future growth, that can accommodate a two-bedroom house, and the Z B A is willing to grant them the setback variances that they need, then all other things being equal, I don't see anything here that the planning board is historically opposed to. I think with respect to the, the line of sight, the setback of the proposed structure is deep enough that it's gonna have zero impact on the existing line of sight from people pulling out of their driveways.
Right.
Their line of sight is partially obscured by an existing barn. And whether or not any town board, any, any of the town boards might consider the removal of the barn as a condition of approval is, is, is one of the, the conditions that the Z B A or the planning board could oppose, if that made sense. That's, that's kind of my take.
What about the alleged contamination? Do you think that's something that if the C B A gives approval, it is?
No.
Have it sampled?
No. So...
Why, why would you say no?
Well, Phase One environmental site assessment is something that's required of certain uses. It's not something that's required on a single-family site unless you are going to a lender, and the lender asks you to provide the results of the Phase One environmental site assessment as a condition of financing. So, it's not really this board's purview to acquire environmental testing.
Oh, we have in the past.
For a single-family home.
No.
I don't have a complex. Yep, apartment complex.
Oh, it's Heights Bank. I think it was on the conservation ward, so, between 85 and 2000.
And, like I say, if, if there was other activity in here, chances are it was in the area of the leach field. Testimony suggested that there were some other barns that were behind the existing barn.
Right.
So, chances are.
The leach field's gonna be destroyed.
Where the leach field's gonna be, chances are, if in fact that there's inorganic material, if there's engine parts or...
Engine block.
Engine blocks or, you know, rubber tires or places that, you know, any of that stuff could happen.
I'll go through the staff.
No, the viewer, decade historical maps, not 10 years ago.
I mean, they're likely to find it there, and then...
Want to check it first?
Okay.
Is that recent? Yes, this is 2015. Yes, this is 2015.
I see the start here, and we may have those videos too.
Do we have?
Yeah, safe start. You can see two structures there at least.
1961.
Somebody also suggested that this was resummed in a not-too-distant past.
Well, it was part of the...
It makes like maybe even a larger barn between the two properties.
Hey, again, try, don't get messed up with the property.
Sandbore maps? Those? Sandbore maps?
Haven't used them before.
I've used them in the past, but...
Again, the property lines are going to shift as you go through this area of the tree.
Correct, yeah. I'm not entirely sure my university access. I used to have university access.
Again, we just showing the historical maps, just to go back through that public comment. There definitely were multiple structures on the property, and that goes back to the sixties and fifties and seventies probably. So, but... Going back to the contamination, concern or comments, I should say. We, one thing the board could ask for is if soil data is available from the test that could be provided by the applicant.
Yeah, that's an appropriate thing to request.
Is what I think the board would typically do before going too deep into Phase One fees to environmental audits of a property.
Deep hole test data and the perk test data.
Okay.
Yeah, it's appropriate.
As you said, Jim, I just wanted to echo that the zoning board did provide a letter to the planning board in advance of this meeting. They've been tabling this application for the past couple of meetings now with regards to the area variances for setbacks. As a reminder, those are for the front and the rear. As the applicant stated, the difference between the previous application that was heard in 2015, I believe, and this is that they have designed the home to be two feet further off the road than what was originally designed. So it went from a 34 front setback to a 36-foot front setback while maintaining a 20-foot rear setback and required 10-foot side setbacks. So you're looking for front and rear on a very... On a lot that we usually don't see too often. It is the result of just history, basically, how this lot was created. Originally, I believe, was part of the adjacent property across the street. However, as time goes on and properties change hands, it changes addresses, and the road creates a subdivision of the property, basically. And without acquiring land from adjacent property owners on the south side of the road, that lot stays the way it is.
Most of the planning board's past.
Pretty much, pretty much. So again, this property has been this way for several, several years. It is not the only of its kind, probably the only one that's oriented in this way where it is wider. It is wider than it is deep, which is unconventional for most single-family homes. It is in the RE2 zoning district as well. You know, just like everything else in the surrounding property.
So can you clarify, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use for the barn?
Well, basically, with that respect, I believe, and this is something we can verify, you know, the size of the barn as it is today would basically be too large.
And the proximity to the boundaries.
For the size, yes, for the proximity to the boundaries, especially being up to the road that's pre-existing non-conformer. Again, and also the size of it in relation to the size of the parcel. Our code now allows for barns, requirements for sheds on less, on any property less than five acres to be a certain percentage of the property. And this being half acre, it would most likely exceed that. Again, I haven't run those numbers, but again, pre-existing due to how close it is to the road. No structure today would be allowed to be that close, but it's pre-existing.
What about, you have a lot with a barn on it, it's an RE2 zoning. Is that a house, is there your grandfather in there where a house can be put on a lot smaller than two acres? Or would this really...
Like, basically, this exact situation? I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Because they're going for a setback variance, are they going for total area variance?
Well, there's an area variance, it's...
Oh, lot size? No, because they're not changing what already exists. Like, you're not creating, you're not, you would need an area variance for lot size if you were creating a lot.
If you're providing a larger parcel into the square.
Yes, I mean, the size of the property. Exactly. The size of the property is what it is because it predates our zoning ordinance that create the two-acre zoning district there.
So they only need the front and rear setback variance?
Correct. Correct, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify, how many variances we're talking about here?
Yeah, an area variance for front and rear setbacks, yep. Lot size, it is what it is because it existed before our 1981 zoning ordinance, which created the two-acre zoning district. Before that, everything was half-acre residential.
Even though it's less than a half acre?
Point, yeah. I wasn't around before 81, so how people interpret half acres could be plus, minus.
Okay.
I would also like to mention that when the board, this board previously reviewed this application, again, with the different setbacks. 2015, it was typed under seeker as a type one action due to the presence of, again, a historically designated landmark across the street. It's under seeker that is contiguous, we determine, we find that to be contiguous to the subject parcel, therefore triggering a type one review. When the board went through this process, it went through the lead agency process, and letters were sent out to potential involved agencies. The board was declared lead agency then and performed and acknowledged that this was class, that this could be determined as a negative declaration for environmental significance. So based on our previous review of this property, as yet when the application come in, letters were sent out for lead agency requests to the involved agencies such as Monroe County DOH, state DOT, SHPO, state historic preservation, basically, zoning board of appeals, any agency that would be involved in this. Those letters were sent out more than 30 days ago. We received feedback from several of them, all acknowledging that the planning board would be the applicable board to be lead agency once again. So I just wanted to address seeker as his application starts up its review process again. It would be fair to treat this again in a similar fashion as we have gone ahead and...
Really, the proposed action is the construction of a single-family home with a state sewage disposal system.
And that's why the board...
On significant impact.
And that's why the board made the determination for a negative deck previously.
Right.
So just, I know we're still talking site, but regarding seeker, board's options this evening would be to accept lead agency as one vote. And pending your review of the site. Pending, yeah, exactly, pending the review of the site plan as proposed, the board could be in the position to also vote on a declaration of a neg deck, exactly. A determination of a neg deck, I'm sorry. That was my seeker spiel.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt the site plan, but there was a brief pause there for me.
I mean, I'm a, we might as well take care of that tonight, I would think.
So we need a motion to accept lead agency?
Yep.
Current motion?
Second.
Canower.
Bastian.
Give it to Canower. They're telling on us anyway.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Knauer?
Aye.
Hiding?
Aye.
Okay.
An interview with the site plan, as Jim stated, it's a single-family home on a raised bed leach field, so I don't see any reason not to say it's a, it's a neg deck. Correct, negative declaration.
Okay, so moved and...
Second.
Burton, second.
Hetzke?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Hiding?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, board. We will issue the negative declaration as a follow-up to this meeting as well. Will be included in any resolution that comes, most likely the daily heads of the issue. This meeting is well, anyways.
All right, so a tabling resolution. The environmental aspects of this would be discovered and/or determined in the leach field or possibly required by a bank if a mortgage was required.
You're talking phase one?
Not to mortgage property, you already own.
But to build a house? If you need...
No. If you're borrowing money to buy real property, every federally backed lender is going to ask you to have a Phase One. Bless you. But he already owns the property. So that's off the table. I think what we're talking about now is getting your copy of the deep hole test results and the perk test results. And...
Speak up.
Did you catch that?
Oh, yeah, I got that. Also, there are PRC comments out there that the applicant is required to respond to. A lot of it is technical site related. Some of them are related to drainage. I don't know if there's anything you want to speak to on that, but we did issue some comments about drainage and trying to collect some, collect more of the water, the runoff on-site with potentially a dry well. So again, we'll leave that to the applicant to respond to that. In the meantime, with potentially some revised plans to those technical details.
And this will be in the table and resolution?
Yep.
Okay. Is the engineering department comfortable with the methods of determining whether there's contamination on-site?
Well, there, it's kind of tough, because when you do those deep holes, you're just looking at the soil media, and you're looking for mineral deposits in the groundwater and stuff like that that we've already talked about. I don't know if they'd be necessarily, knowing what they're looking at as far as if there's oil or, you know, it could just be, you know, a stain or anomaly that's in the soil that, you know, nobody would even know what it was, so...
It also depends on how much time has passed, probably.
Right.
But the point is, even if there was some evidence of that, the proposed action here isn't going to exacerbate that problem.
No.
It's a raised bed evaporation system.
Correct.
With a skirt. So, you know, I really don't think those are our issues.
Right. Yeah, the perk test and the deep hole, one of those or both of them failed, and that's the reason for the raised fill.
Correct.
So...
Okay.
Which also just happens to be more environmentally friendly.
With the raised fill system.
But if they uncover something when they go to install a septic system?
Well, it's going to be built on top of the existing service.
The leach lines are going to be in the new media.
Okay, so they won't discover it then?
They, you know, they've got, they've got a tank and the feed line from the tank back to the leach field.
And it's a force, it's a force.
Okay.
Line, yeah.
Okay.
Still excavation.
Do we have anything we need to tell?
We do have a table. I don't believe there's any... I don't know if there's a need for a letter back to the zoning board regarding the site plan review at this time. The tabling resolution could capture that. Would the board like staff to await further responses before drafting approval? Is the board there yet? Is there an approach? Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. I just want to throw it out there, if it's part of this tabling resolution. Could wait to see what the zoning board does.
Yeah, I would wait to see what the zoning board does.
When's the date on zoning?
But that's September 21st.
September 21st. This board will meet again on the 14th and the 28th of September.
They're not implying to grant the variances, then it's more important?
Right.
It's true.
So we could waste?
And also, one thing, one thing I'd like to follow up on to what the applicant has stated in their presentation. Regarding the Department of Health, staff had a conversation, phone call with the DOH prior or during the zoning board's initial review. And we did confirm that the Department of Health would be in a position to approve the design septic system as proposed pending town approvals for site plan. And if you'd like correspondence on that, we can, we can reach out and get written correspondence to that effect.
All right.
Move the table?
Burton.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Hiding?
Aye.
All right, move the table.
Good night, Jim. See ya. All right. Glendaviers.
Back to Glendaviers. I'll let you kick it off. I don't have much. Right now.
All right.
I'll see where you go.
I don't have a whole lot to say about that sign. You know, to me, they clearly need the parking. I... You know, if additional parking and spots are desired for the trailhead, I myself don't see why the town can't, you know, flatten out some property at the end of the road and create a little parking lot there. You know, I don't see why we should be forcing or, I mean, I don't think we are forcing them. Yeah, the applicant to allow that or do that or whatever, but...
Certainly a town board decision to do additional work in the right way.
Absolutely. You know, I, I guess I applaud the applicant if they're willing to cooperate with that. But I certainly, you know, as a private property advocate, necessarily think that we should require. But other than that...
Have they had a chance to review this new document they gave us tonight?
I don't know, that just came in.
They got that about noon today.
Yes, they probably did.
They will receive.
They will receive it.
So we got to give them time to review this anyway, right?
They'll receive that, and several of the comments there were kind of captured in his review of the DEC comments as well. I'm sure there are a few others that they will respond to, but they do have other comments out there to respond to as well from the PRC and the conservation board. So, but yeah, they will receive that, and we'll have time between now and the next meeting to respond.
What are your thoughts, Terry?
Well, as long as they answer all the questions that, you know, that the engineers are concerned with, it's got to go for the town anyways, right, for the, right away. And they addressed all the other PRC concerns in this document received tonight. And then it's got to go back to zoning anyways, as long as they get the act forming. I guess I could, I don't know if they actually prove that they need another 45 spots, but, you know, as long as the town engineers agree that, you know, that, I mean, it's the best they can do with, you know, cutting into that hill there and putting those spots there, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I mean...
Take the step in the right direction. They're not going to get 192 or 195 spots.
Yeah, 195, so it's...
Maybe they could do a parking garage. Multi-level.
Underground.
Yeah, underground.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem.
And they addressed the issues, I think they talked about the conservation board and were working with them and theirs. And then I think somebody mentioned the landscaping. And then, uh, I think mentioned, somebody mentioned the, the landscaping about the tree removal. I guess, but we would have them, uh, work with our landscaping people to make sure, I mean, I don't know how many, you know, trees they're gonna have to take out of there, you know?
Sounded almost as if they'd take out trees as they're selling the topsoil and not take everything down, is that accurate?
I, I think the grander plan is to, again, find...
Or take it all down and then...
Do it all as one contiguous process, continuous process with one contractor. He had mentioned, um, I believe it was a Frani?
Yeah. Yeah, Andrew Frann.
Yep, and if they can enter into agreement with them, that well, that sole company would take all the necessary material, excavate, erosion control, tree removal, do it all, uh, as part of the excavation process, the removal process, transport it with their trucks off-site, maintain the, maintain the dirt and stone or whatever else, uh, going onto the road and creating, you know, what happens during construction sometimes, you know, get some dirt or mud that tracks on the road. We'll need to keep that road clean and they will be responsible for maintaining that, um, but I think it would all happen as part of that one continuous process. Is what they sound like their goal is.
If he sold the dirt, yeah, if he said hopefully he was gonna find...
Yep.
Someone, a Franti's find, uh, somebody to purchase, you know, the majority of the dirt and then take the dirt out as necessary. Hopefully, one person as opposed to, I think, several different ones. So, hopefully, get it out at one time.
Is a project like this bonded?
It will be, right?
We would take a letter of credit, certainly, for this project, um, to include, you know, site stabilization, erosion control, uh, maintenance of the road. You gotta make sure the road is still maintainable with the truck traffic that's expected for it, um, some, it was, there will certainly be reviews, uh, pre and post-construction of the bridge and its integrity. That way, we know what it is prior to and what happens during, that way we can keep an accurate record of it.
I was gonna mention that, we have failed bridges over New York State, and this was built as a state road at one point, but it hasn't been a state road in how long?
This is true.
So, but what kind of condition is that bridge in now compared to how it was built originally designed?
This is a Browncroft Bridge.
Yeah.
Well, they're coming out from that.
Yeah.
Grab a pit out in, uh...
Rebuilt in 2000.
Wayne County.
Was it, it's less than like 15 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really old, but...
What about the trails? So, what's the, um...
I have, you wanna see him kinda overlay?
Yeah.
Doug, do we have that as part of our GIS layer on staff or is it something we're working on?
Well, we do have trails, but we don't have this. I did it in a separate GIS map that has, as a PDF, but unfortunately, it's on my workstation.
Okay.
All right.
Could you possibly trace something out?
Well, I think it's cool if we can get everything.
Uh, yeah, I'll trace it out here on GIS.
As a county.
So, there... Now, the trails, oh, actually, I don't know if we do have trails on this one. We may not have them. So, the trail on the county land ends somewhere in this area, it loops back around. But they, people have... Sort of blazed a trail.
East and then up north, right?
Up here and underneath the bridge from what I've been told, um, towards this property.
It's all right, we're gonna ignore that one.
Yeah.
Don't sweat it too much.
It's a rough draft.
So, each one is perfect.
And then I believe there is a dedicated trail access for Tryon Park that comes up here. There's a crash bar, um, for emergency access, and I believe there's a trail that stems off right along here.
Yeah, I can see it cut out along the road there on the side. And it would come up to the east or west of Glendaviers, Doug, I guess, when we're talking about the property.
Well, it comes up sort of...
For the proposal, I'd take it winner.
So, right now, I believe the proposal was, there is access, basically, um... There is sort of, I guess it's unofficial walkway access against Browncroft Boulevard from underneath the bridge.
Okay.
I think that actually, the crash bar is right, right here. This is where trails come into Tryon Park.
So, if you zoom into Glendaviers site...
And then I believe the idea is that people walk along Old Browncroft Boulevard to the trailhead here.
There we go.
And there's a, I guess people feed ducks down here.
Can you zoom into, can you zoom into what that's...
Actually, there are people putting their kayaks down there, they had to be when I was down there. They can load their kayaks down there.
Yeah, people load kayaks down here, um, from my understanding, county pure waters has gotten a little bit more...
Strict?
Strict, cause they don't technically allow people to put in, people will park down here and put in at county pure waters, they don't like that, um, because of... So, I believe people have been using this area up here as well as this area down here to launch kayaks into the creek.
Okay, so we're just gonna recommend that they work with the Hattie Field Trails Committee?
We had something preliminary drawn up between Ed, myself, and Jim Costello.
Okay, there we go. All right. What else you want? So, it's gotta be, anyways, we're zoning, we're gonna, uh, well, they gotta give them a chance to answer, uh, these questions and stuff, right? Cause we're gonna send them and then, uh, they gotta go to zoning board anyway, so...
They're, yeah, they're currently tabled for the zoning board for the expansion to pre-existing non-conforming.
Table it, uh, I think we're okay to table it again till we get the...
When do they go for the report?
21st.
Terry, would you like to know, um... The number of staff during events that they expect to have their parking on-site?
Yes, because I was there the other day, they didn't even have an event there, I bet you there were at least, um, seven, eight vehicles. And that was just for the catering, I guess, cause they, uh, had left for a catering, catering event when I stopped there.
Okay.
So, there's at least seven or eight. And then they must go in their trucks or whatever they have and then leave the rest of the vehicles there, so, yeah. So, that would definitely be a good question there.
Okay.
So, I'm just going through my notes from the presentation. I don't see anything, I, I don't see anything else that jumps out to me right now. Um, I think a major hurdle for them will be to, not a major hurdle, but one of their upcoming tasks will be to provide the necessary responses for the continued review of the plans, uh, to get revised plans in and to make sure the satisfaction of our engineering staff, uh, as well as other reviewing agencies. So, it's part of our typical tabling resolution with that language.
So, I'll make the motion to table it, just then.
I heard a Knower?
Bastian.
Bastian.
Sorry.
Knower was asleep.
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Knower?
Hi.
Tiding?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
With, uh, any further business?
No further business.
Then we will adjourn for the evening. Thanks, everybody, fellas. Have a good rest of the month.